Good evening, Florida, and welcome to Coastal Conservative News, where truth has a backbone and freedom still has a home. I'm Ally Leger.
And I'm Michelle Posey. We're bringing you the bold stories, the real headlines, and the voices that matter most, right here from the heart of the free state of Florida.
From Tallahassee to the Sun Coast, we're tracking the political shifts, community victories, and constitutional battles shaping the future of our state and our nation.
So buckle up, guys. It's time to get informed, get fired up, and get involved. This is CCN, Coastal Conservative News.
Let's kick things off with Katie and your Week in Review.
Thank you, Ally and Michelle. I'm Katie with CCN's Week in Review. School board meetings across the country are becoming battlegrounds, not over math scores or safety plans, but over activism and ideology creeping into what should be neutral government spaces. On June 10th, I attended the Sarasota County School Board meeting, and what I witnessed confirmed what many parents are already feeling nationwide. Our school boards are being hijacked by activism, and it's distracting some from the real business at hand. During the meeting, one of our own board members used their platform to promote his political and sexual identity, a move that sparked concern and frustration.
Happy Pride.
Thank you, Mr. Ederson.
Hello, board. Good afternoon and Happy Pride Month.
And Happy Pride Month.
Happy Pride Month.
Thank you very much.
And Happy Pride.
Parents and community members are making their voices heard. They are demanding that the school board meetings stick to their intended purpose, serving students and families, not pushing ideological narratives. What was once a space for professional governance is beginning to resemble a platform for identity politics and personal virtue signaling. And Sarasota is not alone. Across the country, families are calling for clear boundaries, not activism, no flags, no politicized messaging in the boardroom. Let's remind our board folks. You were elected to manage education, not to make a statement. There's a time and place for everything. The school board is neither the time nor the place for pride celebrations. At the very same Sarasota County School Board meeting on June 10th, concerned parents showed up to speak on academic priorities, but the left-wing activists continued to stand up to make public comment and continue to push their proposed Committee for Community Schools. According to the speaker, the goal would be to restructure the school system with wraparound services integrating healthcare, social work, housing support, and more into the school daily. Supporters claim it's about equity, but critics argue it's a Trojan horse for government overreach, leftist ideology right into our classrooms. I'm sorry, but we don't need school-based programs run by political nonprofits. We need reading, writing, and math. Parents in Sarasota fear the creation of such a committee would open the door to more activist influence, while stripping away parental rights and local control. It all just seemed sneaky and politically motivated. As the Sarasota County School Board moves forward with budgeting and strategic planning, many in the community are sounding the alarm. Focus on academics, keep ideology out, and say no to activist committees disguised as community programs. It is these activists who continue using school board meetings to push political agendas instead of academic priorities. Parents will respond the only way they can, by pulling their kids out. More families were turned to school choice and use Florida voucher systems to find education free from indoctrination and rooted in core values. The message is clear. If public schools abandon parents, parents will abandon public schools. Thank you for watching CCN's Week in Review. Back to you, Ally and Michelle.
Welcome back to CCN. Thank you, Katie, for that report. Now, guys, here is Raj Dorasami with our Sun Coast Community segment.
Hi, this is Raj Dorasami with CCN, and I'm delighted to have Robert Goodman again with me from CDF. Robert, I just enjoyed our conversation last time. It was really good. It's good to have you back. How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you doing, Raj?
Doing good, thank you. Here, we're actually going to drill even further into the fatherhood initiative. Can you tell us a little bit about it? And can you also talk about Colby, who's going to be joining us in a few seconds?
Sure. In our last conversation, we talked about our Responsible Fatherhood Toolkit that was coming out that has now officially launched.
That's awesome. That's great. Can't wait to see it.
Yep. Well, we're going to do that. I want to bring on the man who is responsible for this idea and who put most of the hard work and labor into this. So I'm the Florida Faith Director for Citizens Defending Freedom, and you just added Colby Wiltse, who is the National Faith Director for Citizens Defending Freedom.
Colby, great to have you on. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule. I know you had a meeting today with some pastors and all kinds of things going on. It's very exciting what you guys are doing with fathers. How are you doing, Colby?
I'm doing great, Raj, and thank you for inviting me on today. It's an honor and a privilege to be with you.
Oh, my gosh. The privilege is ours. So let's get right into it. Fatherhood, not enough people talking about fathers, even fewer people doing something for fathers. So let's get into it. What is CDF, Citizens Defending Freedom? What are they doing for fathers, Colby?
Absolutely. Well, Raj, thank you again, and I'm really excited to share about our Responsible Fatherhood Campaign. It's really an initiative that's near and dear to my heart, being a dad myself with three young boys. And we're coming into June. We're in June now, and so we've got Father's Day coming up. So we launched this to be in timing with that. But really, we launched this initiative to spotlight something in our country that I think is desperately needed right now, and that's we need strong, present, godly fathers. And the truth is that when you start diving into the research and the statistics around fatherlessness in our country, it's not just a family issue, it's actually a national crisis. And I think that we need people to wake up to that. And so this toolkit, what we've created, is a campaign to restore the role of fathers in families and communities across the country. And right now, we're working to have June formally recognized as Responsible Fatherhood Month in all 50 states and cities and counties around the country. And we want to see this proclamation spread across the nation. That's why we designed this toolkit. And so it's not only to bring awareness to the issue, but it's to give with educational resources. But it's also what we do at CDF is we don't just educate, we empower citizens to take action. And so we're giving people the tools to get involved and bring responsible fatherhood to their cities and communities across the country.
So when it comes to fathers, just, I know it should be obvious, but could you talk for a minute about why this is such a big deal? Yes, we definitely honor the women in our community. We want them protected. We want them safe, and there's a lot of attention, and as there should be, on women, mothers, young girls. But when it comes to fathers, they play a very critical role, and their absence in this role has a devastating cascading effect in our community. So can you just help us kind of get present to what a big deal this is when we're talking about fathers?
Absolutely. No, it's a great question, and you're absolutely right. All the single moms out there that are holding it down, we support you and we thank you for what you're doing. But the role of the father is so key to the family unit. When you look at a lot of the problems that we have today in America, not having a father figure in the home is at the heart of a lot of these issues. And you know, when you start looking into the statistics, it really paints a sobering picture of our current reality. You know, if we're talking about at the national level, one in four American children live without a father figure in the home. And that's according to the United States Census Bureau as of 2023. If you put that into perspective, Raj, that's enough children to fill New York City two times. That's enough to fill Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, four times over. I mean, this is a big deal. The United States is advanced as we are, as free as we are. We actually lead the world right now in single-parent households. That's three times the global average. So although this is a global issue, it's uniquely American in that sense that we are actually leading the world in fatherlessness. Forty percent of births right now happen outside of marriage, and fatherlessness is actually costing taxpayers over $100 billion a year annually through welfare program, government programs, justice system expenses, all the things that the taxpayers are footing the bill just because of this issue. And you guys live in Florida. I live in Texas. If you just drill down into your state, nearly four in 10 children in Florida live in single-parent households. Only 15.3% of Florida households are made up of married couples with children, and that's ranking 50th amongst all the states. So I mean, this is a nationwide crisis. We've got to get a handle on it, and we know that if fatherlessness ripples out beyond that. If you just look at incarceration rates in our country, 85% of all youth in prison come from fatherless homes. That's 20 times the average. And that's according to Georgia and Texas Department of Correction Facilities. You have greater depression amongst children, elevated teen pregnancy, academic failure. 71% of high school dropouts are because of fatherlessness. So it's literally a crisis in America. And I think there's several reasons why this is happening. One, it's a spiritual problem. You know, I was in Malachi, I was reading Malachi last night before I went to bed, and I read the whole book of Malachi. It's a short read, but you know, when talking about ancient Israel, there was a societal breakdown in the way that they were worshiping God and the offerings they were bringing, but also in the family structure. There was divorce. There was, people were committing adultery, and God hates divorce. We know this. He says it flat out in Malachi. But towards the end, he gives a glimpse into the future, and he talks about that he's going to, you know, he talks about John the Baptist coming and that there's a prophet coming. And so, but he says, "In those days, I want to return the hearts of the fathers to their children and the hearts of children to their fathers lest I come and destroy the land." And I think that that last part, "lest I come and destroy the land", is playing out in our country today with all the issues we're facing. You know, we have young people that don't even know if they're a boy or a girl. We have, you know, abortion on demand. We have a financial crisis in the country, and I think a lot of it stems from fatherlessness. But though there's a spiritual component to this as well, there's also the personal responsibility component for dads. But I also think there's a real agenda behind this as well. And if you want, I'd be happy to dip into that, what I think that is.
Yeah. In fact, we've got another two minutes here. I want to ask you if you don't mind to unpack this toolkit, because as people are listening to this, we become re-presence to the gravity of the situation. But CDF hasn't stopped there. You are providing a way to provide this renaissance, this return back to what is needed, and it's exciting what would happen if just a few fathers would come on board with this. The impact of that also would be a cascade for the positive. So talk a little bit about the toolkit and the resources that CDF is making available.
Absolutely. So there's really two components to this toolkit. If you go to our website, citizensdefendingfreedom.com/fatherhood, there is a spot on the website where you can download, and you'll get an email, you'll get a link, and you'll get the toolkits with you. There's an educational toolkit, and that's really to raise awareness and inform people within your church, within your community, about the state, about America's fatherhood crisis. And it's really created to bring awareness to the issue and create action behind it. We've got a lot of ready-made resources, ready to go. So social media graphics, you can share these on your social platforms. We've got printable bookmarks and fax cards that you can go to your local printer and hand those out at church or within your community. We've got a fatherhood fact sheet with all the cited sources that I'm talking about today that you can use. We've got a Bible verse application guide, with state-specific memos. And then the action kit is, okay, what, okay, Colby, you give me all these resources. What do I do? Now I've got to take action. So we've created a way not only to equip people to spread awareness, but to get the Fatherhood Proclamation passed in their cities, in their counties, and in their states. And in there, there's scripts that people can use if they want to go to the mic at public comment. There's letters for them, already pre-written letters. They can download those and customize those based on where they live or how they want to contact their governor that they can write in. We have state customizable resolutions. We have ready-made proclamations, literally sample email templates where you can just copy and paste the email template, modify your city and your county, and then send that to your mayor or your county judge and work to get that proclamation passed in your city. So that's what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to get June recognized as Responsible Fatherhood Month in every state, every city, and every county across the country.
This is vital information. And my friends, if you're watching this, likely, you're probably aware of the importance and the benefit of what you just heard. However, however, there are people in your life, and you know this, there are people in your life that may not know that, and there are people in your life that are impacted by fatherlessness. And so if you're not in the state of Florida, you saw that on that page, and I'm going to have my producers put that link here in the bottom of the screen here. Please go to that website. If you're not in the state of Florida, hit that governor link that you just saw there on that page for a packet of information. If you're in the state of Florida, and even if you are not, please take this information and do the following. Get your phone. Get your phone. Look up some people on your contacts that you know need to hear this, and then call them. Don't text them, don't message them, don't email them, don't social media them. I mean, you can, but pick up the phone and call them. Why? Because you, my friends, are able to reach people that the people putting this broadcast together will never get to. You are the key. You are absolutely the key to spreading what you just heard here. Jesus said, "Do not be a hearer only, but be a doer." And the only difference between, in Jesus' examples, of the wise person and the foolish person, according to Jesus, is the foolish person heard but didn't do. The wise person heard, and he did. So please be a doer. So as we wrap this up, Colby, if people want to follow you, follow CDF, learn more, get more information, if they want to donate, if they want to support, if they want to join a chapter in their location, how do they do that, Colby?
Absolutely. Well, the first step is simply going to our website. It's citizensdefendingfreedom.com. If you go to the bottom, you'll see that we're on X, we're on Instagram, we're on Facebook. You can join us there. You can sign up to become a subscriber on our email list and get plugged in, and we'll keep you up to date on all the things we have going with Citizens Defending Freedom around the country and through Citizens Defending Freedom faith. And then also, that would be just hitting the subscribe button, and then right at the top, that red button, donate. Every dollar right now, up until, I believe, July 4th, is doubled. So any donation you can make to our cause so that we can continue to champion liberty and bring churches online and reach people with the gospel, we appreciate. We're a donor-funded operation, so your support is so appreciated.
Well, there you have it. You heard from Colby Witz. Did I pronounce that correctly, Wiltse?
Wiltse, there you go.
Wiltse, Colby Wiltse. And also want to thank Robert Goodman for making that connection. My friends, this is so, so, so important. Please take the action. So before another video comes across your screen, before something comes up, before you get the next text message or DM from someone, please, please, please take that action. Please be a doer, not just a hearer. And again, the website is Citizens Defending Freedom. You can see their link right here at the bottom. The Father could Toolkit is something that you want to get and take action on. Colby, I want to thank you, Russ, for coming and spending a few minutes with us. I know you've got a day full of meetings here, and I want to thank you also for doing what you are doing. Friends, the folks at CDF often will meet with your pastoral leadership in your location. So please go to the website. Please contact them and see if you can connect the leadership in your location with this great organization, CDF, Citizens Defending Freedom. And thank you for that. And with that, we're going to conclude our interview here. Again, Citizens Defending Freedom, see the URL at the bottom. Thank you, Colby, for joining me today.
Raj, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Raj, thank you so much for having us on today. We appreciate your, we appreciate your time and your viewers, and thank you.
You're welcome, Robert. We'll talk soon.
Thank you, Raj, for that report. Next up is our Political Pulse segment. Keep it right here on CCN.
Welcome to Political Pulse, where Florida's heartbeat meets the headlines.
Tonight, we're tracking the pulse of our great state from free speech lines being drawn in the sand to education breakthroughs and a growing battle over law, order, and leadership.
That's right. Florida's leading on every front, and we've got the facts, the quotes, the truth the mainstream won't even touch. Let's dive in.
Florida attorney James Uthmeyer is sounding the alarm and cracking down hard on those attempting to dox ICE agents operating in Florida.
After a disturbing campaign targeting agents with threats and leaked personal info, Uthmeyer warned, quote, "There will be a zero tolerance for harassment or intimidation of law enforcement officers in this state."
Right. This is Florida drawing a red line. You don't get to weaponize the internet against public servants doing their jobs, and if you try, it will not end well for you.
That's right. And with ICE operations ramping up here in Florida, this legal protection couldn't be more timely.
In other news, the city of Miami is making waves again, this time by floating the idea of changing election dates, allegedly to better align with their agenda to boost voter turnout.
Sounds fishy. Critics say this isn't about convenience, it's about control. A shift like this could change candidate dynamics and even raise serious constitutional concerns.
Exactly. Many are calling the move, quote, "full Marxist." The question now, is this a bureaucratic reshuffle or a political power play?
And more importantly, will the courts let it happen? As AG Uthmeyer pointed out in a letter sent to the city commissioners, that this change must be done through voter-approved charter amendments, not a city ordinance.
Absolutely. Now, Florida just ranked number one in the nation on the Parent Power Index by the Center for Education Reform, and for a good reason.
That's right. Our charter school law is the strongest in the nation. Why? Equal funding, parental influence, and a system built for real outcomes, not bureaucracy.
Absolutely. Florida offers pathways for every student, college prep, vocational tracks, trade programs, you name it, and it's working.
That's right. Our education freedom isn't just policy, it's practice. Families have real choices, real transparency, and real control, Ally.
This is why parents are flocking to Florida. It's not just sunshine, it's sovereignty in education.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Now, guys, as you're following these riots across the nation, we're also following it here in Florida. As riots brew in parts of the country, Ron DeSantis, our famous governor, is making one thing crystal clear, guys. Floridians have the right to defend themselves.
Absolutely. In a clip posted by Rubin Report, DeSantis said, quote, "If you try to burn down someone's business, if you attack someone in the street, don't be surprised when they defend themselves. That's Florida law," end quote.
Yes. This isn't just a warning to would-be rioters, it's a promise to Florida residents. The law, guys, is on your side.
And it's part of a larger trend we're seeing around the state and around the nation. So hopefully, we keep those riots at bay.
That's right. Guys, in another strong show of support for peace and order, a Florida sheriff had this to say to would-be rioters.
So I'm going to, I'm going to break it down for you, all right? And if somebody wants to know what I mean by turn violent, all right? This is what I mean. If you resist lawful orders, you're going to jail. Let me be very clear about that. If you block an intersection or a roadway in Brevard County, you are going to jail. If you flee arrest, you're going to go to jail tired because we are going to run you down and put you in jail. If you try to mob rule a car in Brevard County, gathering around it, refusing to let the driver leave, in our county, you're most likely going to get run over and dragged across the street. If you spit on us, you're going to the hospital and in jail. If you hit one of us, you're going to the hospital and jail and most likely get bitten by one of our big, beautiful dogs that we have here. If you throw a brick, a firebomb, or point a gun at one of our deputies, we will be notifying your family where to collect your remains at because we will kill you graveyard dead. We're not going to play. This has got to stop. You're watching what's taking place out there. You're seeing police officers that are being attacked, being spit on, being put in harm's way just for doing their jobs. You're seeing ICE agents that are being targeted for doing their jobs, and you're seeing obstructionists that are doing all of this, standing in the way of law.
Reading from the tweet, it says, "If you come to our community to wreck havoc, we are ready, and you will regret it. Violence will not be tolerated here."
Wow. Compare that to the silence or worse, the support we see in cities like Portland, San Francisco, and Los Angeles.
Right. Florida doesn't coddle criminals, we defend our citizens.
Ooh, I like that. I like that. Now, of course, Nikki Fried, yes, the head of Florida's Democratic Party, insert boo here, is under fire for backing the controversial No Kings protest.
Guys, this protest, some are reporting, is funded by the Chinese Communist Party, and members of the Walton family have turned violent in several cities across the nation.
That's right. On X, Fried reposted California Governor Gavin Newsom and added this quote, "We, the people, are always more powerful than the people in powerful." Then she urged followers to attend these protests, Ally.
Meanwhile, Florida Governor DeSantis reportedly offered State Guard to help California secure the order, right? And they said, no. They declined his offer to help secure California.
Sounds like willful ignorance there. DeSantis said, quote, "We offered help. They said, no thanks. But Florida will never stand down when our people are at risk," end quote.
Absolutely. We just love our governor here. Once again, it's two visions for America, one that protects people and one that pretends protests can replace policy.
Yes. It was easy for DeSantis to offer our State Guard to California because we clearly didn't need them here. The anti-ICE protests here in Florida did not take the violent turn like in any other cities around the country.
That's right, Michelle. Let's bring in our special guest today, Arnie Sanchez, who attended and recorded footage of the anti-ICE protests here in Tampa.
Hi, guys. Welcome back to CCN Coastal Conservative News right here in Florida. We have a guest with us today who was at the earlier riots that took place here in Tampa. It's kind of odd to think that somebody in Tampa would be trying to do this. This is literally Faffo County, like, I don't know.
Well, not Faffo County. I mean, I'm sure Arnie can speak to it. Hillsborough County is known to be very purple-ish, but Tampa, the city, is definitely blue with the blue mare out there. So if you could, what's her name, Jane?
Yes.
Castor.
Castor, yes.
Okay. So yes, hi, Arnie. Thank you for joining us today. Could you let us know a little bit about why you decided to go out to this anti-ICE protest?
Well, I saw what was happening on the news and what was going on in LA, and that didn't sit right with me. I mean, these people are, they're not even from this country. All the people getting arrested all turned out to be illegal aliens. So they said, like, over 200 people were arrested, and over 200 of them were illegal aliens. So we got foreigners attacking us. So as a patriot and as American, as a former Marine, I felt it's my duty to go out and make sure that, you know, to watch these people and let them know, you know, that they just can't come here and wave their Mexican flags and, you know, just trying to take over this country now. So, you know, I felt it was important to come out on Monday, and what we saw was quite a few things. There was like probably 100 people there. It was a mixture, I would say a third of them were probably the Palestinian protesters. Another third was Antifa, and the other third was a bunch of white liberal Democrats, and one mixed black dude. So that was, so that's what I observed, and they attacked us on our side. They came after the MAGA flag.
That's what I was going to ask you, Arnie. As I understand it from video footage that you've shared on social media, there were many that showed up as far as MAGA supporters that just wanted to offer a different perspective on, I guess, the opinion of what ICE is doing. So you said they came after you and attacked you, the other side did. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, they came after the flag bearers, the MAGA flag bearers, and I had to pull them off. So I'm more of, I would say, I'm a pretty big individual, so I'm more of like a bodyguard, and so I had to protect the other MAGA who was out there pretty, and there were some MAGA superstars out there. And they were getting out there, you know, when the light would turn red, everyone would get on the street, and we had some good... And we had some good MAGA people, they came out with the big flag. And, and so we had to, we observed what, you know, what they were doing, and they were getting in our faces, and then they were taking, trying to take our flags off, like the Antifa little girls, and I had to retrieve the flag back. So it was, it was a little bit of a scuttle, and then that's when Hillsborough PD showed up, and then they gave a little talk, and it seemed like they kind of calmed down after that. But it wasn't really, they didn't really have much going. They were, they blocked, yeah.
Yeah.
They blocked traffic a few times, or even, yeah.
Well, Arnie, you know, Anna Paulina Luna, representative from right here in Florida, has spoken even in preparation for, I guess, tomorrow, for Saturday. You know, we've got these No Kings protests that are being led heavily funded, and she's mentioning, just like you did, if, first, she's saying, you know, don't engage as MAGA in these riots, but if you do show up, that one of the best things, I guess, that she's advising us to do is to get our video cameras out, record faces of people that are doing illegal things, record license plates.
Right.
Do you feel like you were there more as an extra set of eyes than anything to kind of keep an eye on what was going on there?
Yeah, there was a few, I felt like they were either gang members or Mexican cartels, and they went up to one of the guys, one of our MAGA guys who had a cane, and I witnessed them saying that, "I'm going to follow you to your car and murder you." So, and then I called them out on it in front of the cops, which they didn't do anything about it. And, you know, so it was like, they felt emboldened to do it, and we're a standard ground state, you know? I mean, if someone follows me back to my, to my car, I don't care if their cartels are not, they're leaving in a body bag. So, you know, you've got to be careful when you go out there. But it's, it's very, it depends on who. So you got the Antifa, you got these wannabe gangbangers, you got some cartels, and you got the white liberal Democrats, you know, which aren't really a threat. It's mostly, I would say, the people carrying the Mexican flag and burning the USA flag who are going to be the most provocative.
Right. Now, are you concerned at all about the No Kings protests occurring across the nation happening on Saturday?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's going to be like, it could potentially be like the summer of 2020, where they just came for the, for the fentanyl head and burned everything down, burned down their communities. But, you know, Tampa is a strong community, so that stuff's not going to happen here. I mean, maybe in some parts, maybe, you know, in Temple Terrace, it depends where. But the looting and all that, you know, I know that, you know, some sheriffs came out pretty strong and let the public know that, you know, you block traffic, you block roads, and your ass is going to get ran over, you know, if you're being like threatening.
Well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you, and thank you for your service and being and continuing to be a pillar in your community to keep it safe. Thank you so much for joining us on Coastal Conservative News. We'll see you next time, Arnie. We appreciate it. Guys, we want to make sure that you are going to be safe this weekend. If you are going to attend this No Kings protest, please make sure you take your phone out and you are recording things. There is speculation, there are going to be some anti-ICE No Kings protesters wearing MAGA gear. So it is important for you, as true MAGA, as true conservatives, to make sure you are photographing and videoing these people who are acting badly, not in our best interest. All right, you guys, we'll be right back with more CCN right after this.
Welcome back to CCN. Here is Kevin Gamble with this week's Faith in Focus.
Hello and welcome to Faith in Focus. Today, we're diving into a fascinating topic, faith and foundation of science. Specifically, we'll explore how Christian thought laid the groundwork for modern science, how many of the fathers of science were devout Christians, and how the Big Bang Theory aligns with the very first verse of the Bible, Genesis 1:1. Let's begin with a bold claim: Modern science as we know it owes a tremendous debt to Christianity. That might sound surprising in an age where science and faith are often pitted against each other, but history tells a different story. The scientific revolution, which birthed the methods and discoveries we associate with modern science, was deeply rooted in a Christian worldview. Why is that? Well, Christians provided a framework that made science possible. The Bible teaches that God created an orderly, rational universe governed by consistent laws. This belief gave early scientists the confidence that the natural world could be studied, understood, and described mathematically. If the universe were chaotic or the product of capricious gods, as some ancient cultures believed, there'd be little reason to expect predictable patterns. But the Christian view of a purposeful, orderly creation inspired curiosity and investigation. Take, for example, the idea of a single rational god. This led to the assumption that the universe operates under universal laws, laws that could be discovered through observation and reason. As the famous astronomer Johannes Kepler once said, "Scientists were thinking God's thoughts after Him." That's a powerful idea. Science wasn't about defying faith, but about uncovering the divine order embedded in creation. Now, let's talk about some of the giants of science who were also devout Christians. These weren't just casual believers, they saw their faith as integral to their scientific work. First up, Sir Isaac Newton, the father of classical physics. Newton formulated the law of motion and universal gravitation, fundamentally shaping our understanding of the physical world. He was also a deeply religious man who wrote extensively about theology, believing that his scientific discoveries revealed God's handiwork. For Newton, the precision of the universe was evidence of a purposeful, intelligent design. Then there's Johannes Kepler, the astronomer who discovered the laws of planetary motion. Kepler was a devout Lutheran who saw his work as a form of worship. He once wrote, "I gave myself over to my rapture and sing a hymn to the Creator." His faith didn't hinder his science, it fueled it. And let's not forget Robert Boyle, the founder of modern chemistry. Boyle's Law, which describes the relationship between the pressure of volume and gas, is still taught today. Boyle was a committed Christian who funded Bible translations and saw his scientific experiments as a way to glorify God. These men and many others like them were not anomalies. Their faith provided the intellectual foundation for their groundbreaking work. They believed the universe was knowable because it was created by a rational god, a god who invited human beings to explore his creation. Now, let's shift gears to one of the most profound scientific discoveries of the 20th century, the Big Bang. This idea that the universe had a definite beginning has fascinating parallels with the Bible's account of creation, particularly Genesis 1:1, which says, "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth." For centuries, many scientists assumed the universe was eternal with no beginning or end. This view, known as the steady-state theory, was the dominant perspective in cosmology until the early 20th century. But then came Edwin Hubble, an astronomer who turned that idea upside down. In the 1920s, Hubble used powerful telescopes to observe distant galaxies and discovered something astonishing: The universe is actually expanding. Galaxies were moving away from each other like dots on an inflating balloon. If you rewind that expansion backwards in time, it suggests the universe had a starting point, a moment when everything began. This discovery laid the groundwork for the Big Bang Theory, which posits that the universe began roughly 13.8 billion years ago in a single explosive event. This was a game changer. Suddenly, science was pointing to a universe with a beginning, aligning remarkably with the biblical claim in Genesis 1:1. The idea of a beginning was no longer a theological statement, it had empirical support. As physicist Stephen Hawking once noted, "The Big Bang is the instant when time and space were created." Sounds familiar? It's not hard to see the echo of Genesis in that description. For centuries, the eternal universe model seemed to challenge the biblical account. Then Hubble's discovery flipped the script, showing that science and scripture could point to the same direction. Some scientists, like Georges Lamatré, the Belgian priest and astronomer who first proposed the Big Bang Theory, saw this as a beautiful convergence. Lamatré didn't think science and faith were at odds. He saw them as complementary ways of understanding God's creation. He once said, "There are two ways of arriving at the truth, and I decided to follow them both." So what does all this mean for us today? First, it challenges the narrative that faith and science are inherently opposed. The fathers of modern science, Newton, Kepler, Boyle, and others, were driven by their Christian convictions. Their belief in a rational, orderly universe laid the intellectual foundation for the scientific method. Second, the Big Bang Theory reminds us that science can uncover truths that resonate with ancient biblical insights. The discovery that the universe had a beginning aligns with Genesis 1:1 in a way that would have seemed unthinkable a century ago. It's a humbling reminder that truth, whether revealed through scripture or a telescope, often points to something greater than ourselves. As we wrap up, I want to leave you with this thought: Science and faith don't have to be enemies. They can be partners in the quest for truth, each illuminating the other. The next time someone tries to pit them against each other, remember the legacy of those Christian scientists who helped build the modern world and the universe that began with a bang, just as Genesis said it did. That's all for today's episode of Faith in Focus. If you enjoyed this, please share it with a friend and join us next time as we explore more ways that faith and science intersect. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Kevin, for keeping our faith front and center this week. We appreciate you.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
We are here to get an IV.
An IV. I heard you have an IV room?
Absolutely. You just head right back this way.
Awesome. Thank you. Knock, knock. Hello?
Hi, I'm Michelle.
I'm Sarah.
Sarah, this is Ally.
Hi, Ally. Nice to see you.
How are you?
We're stressed, we're moms, we've got multitasking going on. I feel like I fall victim to like a, a brain fog a little bit. I don't know if that's my age or whatnot. Need a little bit of clarity, a little bit of energy.
Yep.
Is there an IV that you would recommend for that? Thank you.
We call this the brainstorm.
The brainstorm.
Come visit We the People Health and Wellness Center.
Where medical freedom exists.
Hello there, I'm Katie with Coastal Conservative News, and today we have Diane. Hello, Diane, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, hi.
I know most people think healthcare vaccine mandates are a thing of the past, but clearly that's a flat-out lie. They're alive and well. Schools are gaslighting students to be vaccinated or pushing them out of school, even with medical or religious exemptions. Tell me a little bit about yourself, Diane, and maybe explain for those watching at home who may not fully understand, what exactly is happening to these students and why?
Yeah, so thank you. So unfortunately, the pandemic really just ramped up with a lot of mandates that went on. So a lot of the undergrads throughout the country, actually, a lot of schools mandated the COVID shot. People are probably aware, there are some mandates that are even in existence in a lot of different states, and that's been a longstanding thing. But when the pandemic started, you know, they really ramped up. They were making them mandatory, and religious exemptions weren't being honored. You know, there were times it was very confusing, you know, and most of the kids just really complied, which was very sad, and, you know, during that process. Because I'm in a state, I'm actually in Connecticut, and we are a state that lost the right to a religious exemption, so I, you know, had the foresight and understanding of exactly how this was, you know, what it meant. And the fact that some of these kids just were not educated, so we really tried to do that. We tried to rally across the country, of course, locally in Connecticut. So fast forward, you know, we kind of got through that. A lot of the undergrads are no longer mandated for COVID, thank goodness. In fact, I can say pretty much across the board. If there are any, we'd like to know. You know, definitely send me a message if that's true, but we really haven't found any anymore. Where we're focused now is with the healthcare students. So what's happening is, and it almost seemed like they're in lockstep. Like, as soon as President Trump actually filed that executive order, which was back in February, right, immediately, right, after he was elected, he did put an executive order in place, which, you know, sort of resolved all the other issues. But it, but it almost ramped up with what's happening with these healthcare students. So we're talking about, you know, maybe pre-med dental students. It could be a physical therapist, it could be a speech therapist, it could be, you know, PA, anything like that, a physical, I'm sorry, physician assistant or anything like that. What we found is they sort of created a loophole with this, and it's the third party. So there's sort of a, what are they calling it? They're calling it a screening.
So they're graduating school, and then they're getting almost to graduation, and they have to go through their clinicals, correct?
Correct.
They are being recommended to these third-party clinical companies, right?
That's it. So they have to go through a screening process. Once they go into, you know, they're ready to go into the clinical part of their program, they go, you know, they have to do this. So they check their vaccination records, they actually do a background check, you know, there's a lot of other things that are going on. But, yeah, they get all the way to this point, and now, again, I'm saying it's lockstep because what we're finding is recently, they're now saying no, no exemptions allowed. So in the past, you know, we found that a lot of the states, especially based on state laws, they were able to take exemptions. You know, a lot of kids, you know, a lot of students going through these programs, even if it existed, they were able to take an exemption. And now, you know, again, there was this whole big shift into this third-party managing all of the oversight, you know, overhead of these programs, and now they're stating no exemptions allowed, period. No medical.
It's really tyrannical. This is going against the law.
It actually is, and, you know, that's been the frustrating part of it, is that the students really just don't seem to understand that this is not only likely illegal in many, many states, but it's also unconstitutional. And there's even discrimination happening with some of these kids because what we're finding is the employer, which, let's, I'll pick on Yale because I can, and we have a history. So Yale would allow exemptions for their employees. So nurses that are in the, you know, in the workforce, actually working for Yale, they would allow them to take an exemption, but not the student. So there's even discrimination going on here. Yeah.
Yeah, rules for thee, but not for me, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So we're trying to reach the students, you know, just to educate them and help them understand, yeah.
What do you tell these students to encourage them and, and speak up for themselves? You know, a lot of these students, I'm sure, feel intimidated, and they're being kicked out of school, threatened, gaslit. What would you?
Segregated.
Segregated, yeah, yeah. What would be your advice to these students for experiencing this?
So I, you know, it's really evolved. You know, in the beginning, we were really trying to help these students find their voice, you know, speak up, stand out, you know, and fight these tyrannical policies. But unfortunately, the... Yeah, find an ally. You know, obviously, we would help. We even had attorneys on standby. You know, there was all this process, you know, which was great. But I'm going to tell you, I know I mentioned this to you when we spoke, it was really just a handful of students that actually stood up. And even those that did were highly ostracized. I had a message two years later, after one of the girls up in Boston College actually did sue. She was probably one of the earliest ones, and, and, sorry about that. And she, she actually is, two years later, still ostracized to a point where she's trying to get a job. She has a degree in molecular biology, and she can't get a job because immediately after they Google her, they recognized that she had sued the school, which, by the way, she lost her, her claim, and, you know, she got out through the process. It is, it is. So she's waitressing still. It's horrifying.
That is heartbreaking. Yeah, and people need to hear these things and the stories and how it's really affecting their lives and how they worked so hard, you know, from high school and so on, and now they're just being completely kicked out of school.
Absolutely. And it's happening. They're either complying, yeah. They're either complying, which is heartbreaking, right? Because, again, I think they're, they've been conditioned since birth. You know, you go to the doctor and you listen, you know... You know, you go to the doctor and you listen, you know, they're the experts, right? So you take your shots. And, you know, again, these kids don't understand that they can say no.
Yeah, yeah. And what happens, you know, is what about the pregnant women and the immunocompromised, you know, people who actually have reasons to not get these vaccines?
Exactly.
It's disgusting.
Well, so that's part of, you know, again, educational piece of this that we're trying to help people understand because the CDC just, you know, well, under the direction of the FDA and the HHS, they just recently came out with that policy stating that it is the immunocompromised or the pregnant women or the, you know, that they're still recommending. And that goes against everything that we know about, right, about health. And, you know, they probably should not be the ones to be getting the shots. So there's a lot of confusion out there. You know, we're just trying to expand our reach.
A lot of big news, right?
Yes.
So what's your role moving forward? And what are you working on currently? And how can we support you?
Well, thank you. You know, it really is about getting the message out, you know, making sure that they, these students, so parents along the way, please make sure that you're educating your kids and certainly encouraging them to speak up. We have a website, it is stopcollegemandates.org. If they have some question or anything, you know, there's a little bit of good information on there. I do have to say, it hasn't been updated in a while, but there, you know, there's a, there's a good amount of information on there. But I, you know, there's an email that you can connect to. So if somebody had a question, it will get right to us. We're more than happy to answer any specific questions or any concerns that you have. Or if you do need a referral to an attorney, we'd be happy to help you with that. We have them across the country. You know, anything that we can do to help these students know that. And it really does come down to that whole idea of rosy parks, right? That just, you just need to say no. You stand up and you say no. And if they did that en masse, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, and you mentioned an event coming up on Monday. You want to tell viewers a little bit about that?
Yeah, thank you. So this isn't something that I'm running, but I absolutely am connected to the folks that are running it. So it's, it's the Religious Federation, actually. There's going to be a full day. It's from 9:00 to 2:30, I guess. It's in the state Capitol. This is connected to the religious exemption issue, right? So President Trump, back in May, gave an executive order, and it basically stated that, you know, you can't stomp on religious rights. So some of the folks may know that there are four states out in, you know, in the country. So that's California, Connecticut, New York, and Maine. They all lost the ability to take religious exemptions for school, right? So this would be kindergarten through 12th grade. In Connecticut and Maine, they actually took it away for daycare, preschool, and college. All of it, right? So, and it's also private and public, so.
And that's why a lot of people are moving to the other states because they have to flee for freedom, and it's heartbreaking.
Absolutely. So the demand or the request, you know, the request in this event on Monday is to restore the religious rights and make a federal, you know, statement that these are paramount, you know, this is, this is beyond any law, that, you know, people's religious freedoms are absolutely supersede. And it should be unconstitutional what they're doing. So we're hoping they'll pay attention to this, and President Trump will expand his executive order.
Definitely. Yeah, you would think it would be a no-brainer, right, Diane?
I hope so. I hope. I'm really hoping this will make a change, so. I'm excited about it. I'll be there.
Yeah, awesome. I'll be thinking of you up there.
Thank you.
Support you, and I appreciate your unwavering dedication to these students. And thank you so much for your time.
Yes, no problem at all. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a wrap for this week's edition of Coastal Conservative News, where we cut through the noise and bring clarity to chaos.
Remember, freedom doesn't preserve itself. From school boards to state houses, your voice, your vote, and your vigilance matter more than ever.
We'll keep standing on truth and shining a light on what matters most here and what others will not shine the light on. Because here in Florida, we don't retreat, we lead.
That's right, Ally. Stay bold, stay informed, and stay rooted in the values that make the nation and this state strong.
For CCN, I'm Ally Leger.
And I'm Michelle Posey. Thank you for watching Coastal Conservative News. If you'd like to reach out to us, you can reach us at contact@coastalconservativenews.com. God bless you and God bless the great state of Florida.